Okay, good evening ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our 2000, no, yes, 2019 first meeting, January 9th, Happy New Year everybody. We'll call this meeting to order, it is a tribe board meeting since it's the first one of the month. Unfortunately, it's a by-board meeting because we only have Finance Committee and the Select Board here this evening. So we will call the meeting to order and our part of, most of our tribe board meeting was going to be in budget preparation. And David was going to start off with his kind of presentation for us.
So the Finance Committee has seen part of this presentation before, so sorry if there's any repetition. There's hard copies on the table, both preliminary warrant as well as some PowerPoint presentation here. I was asked by the Select Board to give a deeper explanation as to the administrative charges associated with the enterprise fund. So I put together a small presentation just to walk through the history, the methodology, and then just to walk through the numbers and see if there's any questions associated with that. So if I could have the first slide? Alright, so Hadley maintains three enterprise funds, it's sewer, there's water, there's Hadley Media. Hadley Media is the most recent, it was created a couple of years ago, three years ago. The others are ancient, measured in decades. It's governed by Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 F and 1/2, and you know you're in Massachusetts when you're talking about F and 1/2. There's a manual published by the Department of Revenue about how enterprise funds are to be operated and includes information about the administrative charges, so that's a link to the website. If I can have the next slide please. Alright, many decades ago, the Select Board, long before my time here, made its policy decision that the enterprise funds were to be self-sufficient. That is to be, that there's no taxpayer money supporting sewer, water at the time, and then most recently Hadley Media. There were some exceptions to this allowed for capital projects, so the water filtration plant, the debt is funded 50/50 through General Fund and the Water Enterprise Fund. There was some Brood Nine water work that was also funded through the General Fund. But the operations are supposed to be entirely self-sufficient without reliance upon taxpayer money. If I can have the next slide. The problem is, is that sewer, water, and Hadley Media enterprise funds, their operational budgets which cover salaries and expenses don't actually cover all of the expenses associated with operating these enterprise funds. For example, benefits, that's life insurance, health insurance, retirement, unemployment, Medicare, Medicare rather, these are not covered by those, the operating budgets for the enterprise fund. Neither are the costs for town officers who do a lot of work with the enterprise funds, so the treasurer, the collector, the assistant treasurer, the assistant collector, me, and a couple of other staff members. Also not included are the expenses associated with the staff outside of the water treatment plant and the sewer treatment plant and the Hadley Media studio, the physical plant that's used to support these other officers and what they're doing. So buildings, property insurance, risk insurance, liability insurance, not included in the enterprise operation budgets. And OPEB, after FY 2014, we started funding our OPEB obligations seriously, and when that first started, we didn't have any OPEB funding through the enterprise funds even though we had retirees in those enterprise funds. So to correct this matter of hidden costs, the Department of Revenue allows a system of administrative charges to ensure the taxpayer money is not supporting the enterprise funds. So I came here in FY 2006, and I inherited a system of administrative charges that, for water and sewer at that time, that consisted of many formulas that worked, some of them competing, and undocumented methodology, and sometimes I was left to making wild guesses as to what a charge particularly may obtain for administrative charges. The result was a set of formulas that were opaque and difficult to understand, the Finance Committee at the time didn't like it, Select Board didn't like it, I didn't like it. So I spent a couple of years tinkering. So I spent a couple of years tinkering and I came to the point where I decided that if you take a rough gem and you polish it, you come up with a beautiful jewel, but if you take a lump of coal, you polish that, you still have a lump of coal. And I decided that the system that I inherited was a lump of coal, that we needed to start over from scratch. So working hand in hand with the Finance Committee at that time, we looked around for best management practices from other towns and developed a unified formula that I think is transparent, rational, comprehensive, fair, and most importantly, has a documented methodology so everybody can follow it and understand what the assumptions are. So just to walk through the numbers, A, B, and C. A is the indirect cost, B are the direct costs, C are the OPEB costs. A is divided into two subgroups, salaries and expenses. So if you look at this, salaries, the total town budget for salaries and benefits is $10.3 million. Water is $300,000 and change, sewer's a little higher, $300,000 and change, and HPAT is $17,000 and change. These represent percentages of the total budget. 3% for water, 3% for sewer, and almost 2/10 of a percent for the HPAT. So you take the salaries and benefits for the people who work in Town Hall, who are directly responsible for administering water, sewer, and Hadley Media, and you come up with a total of $400,000 and change for their salaries and benefits. You apply this percentage here to this number here, and you come up with indirect costs right here, $13,000 for water, $14,500 for sewer, and Hadley Media, $400, about $500. Next slide. So that was indirect costs, part one, that's the salaries. The expenses are the next part, completely indirect costs. So non-personal expenses for the town, $7.6 million, which makes intuitive sense, 7.6 plus the $10 million and change comes up to the budget of $19 million. Of that, $800,000 is for water, $862,000 is for sewer, and 100, is that right? 154 for HPAT. So again, you get the same percent, you get different percentages, but the formula is the same. You've got these numbers here, 10 1/2%, 11%, 2%. You take the expenses, not the salaries and benefits, but the expenses for the officers that work on the sewer, water, and Hadley Media, plus legal expenses, plus insurance, you come up to $640,000. You apply the 640 to the percentage, and you come up with $66,000 for water, $71,800 for sewer, $12,600 for Hadley Media. So that's the indirect costs. The next one are the direct costs. This is Rip and Reed. Okay, there aren't any formulas associated with this. This is a report that I get from the Treasurer's Office. What are the benefits for health insurance for the three enterprise funds, life insurance, Medicare, workers comp, retirement assessment? And we just read those numbers, we add them up, $114,000 for water, $115,000 for wastewater, Hadley Media is $1,200. So the final part of this is the OPEB. FY 19 OPEB contribution was the 18 number times 2 1/2%, that came up to $263,000. And because this is a benefit, we just looked at the total payroll for the percentages. Water is 4.4% of total payroll. Sewer is 3.9% of total payroll, and less than 2%, less than 2 1/2% for Hadley Media for the OPEB costs. Again, you come up with totals, $11,600 for water, $10,400 for sewer, and about $600 for Hadley Media. Final slide. A plus B plus C, you take the indirect charges, direct charges, and the OPEB charges, and you come up with the total assessment. So I understand that there's concerns on both sides of this equation. Some people feel that this is too high to be assessing the enterprise funds. The people who do the work at Town Hall, when they think about their time and they see that only 3% of their time is being allocated to each of the enterprise funds, they say, wait, that, wait a minute, that's way too much. So this splits it down the middle, and I hope that this is a clear explanation as to what the enterprise funds are for, how are they calculated, and how are they applied? Do you have any questions?
So, looking at the methodology that we've been using since 2013, when you're looking at, when you think about the drivers behind it, it would seem that the level of pay that people are receiving within those departments, given the fact that we have some people with significant tenure, you know, within those departments, makes the percentage that much So these numbers could actually reduce fairly significantly, I would imagine, with turnover at some point or natural attrition. Right? I mean, isn't this highly dependent on...
Yeah, if you change the variables, you'll change the result.
Not on benefit wise, you're not.
Yeah, most of the charges for administrative charges is in benefits, but if you're talking about the indirect charges, the buildings aren't really going to change.
Turnover's going to cost you more because you're paying the people who retired, although you've been through this 10 times already.
No, John, I'm talking about, so some of the allocations are based on percentage of payroll. So if somebody leaves and they're making a higher rate of pay, they're replaced with somebody.
The calculation, yeah. But what you said was turnover. Turnover's going to be worse.
Yeah, sorry, I meant that percentage is, so that 4% of could drop down to 3 1/2%. So these numbers aren't only going to go up, it's very possible that they could come back down again.
But they're going to be plus or minus a few thousand dollars because it looks like the biggest contributor is the direct cost, the benefits.
The benefits, yeah.
That's over 50% of each of those.
Mm-hmm.
And that, I would imagine, would stay relatively the same.
Well, especially because we've added OPEB over the last couple of years, which certainly boosted that at that time.
And every time we get to that point...
And you have to keep that in there, there's no way of changing that.
It's supposed to be a cost.
Yeah, exactly.
We're paying it.
Yep.
So why do we, or I should say, why don't we pay some of these direct costs, like you said, the Rip and Reed stuff, right out of the enterprise fund, instead of doing transfers and, you know, one department paying another and complicating it? I mean, you could eliminate the B or the C or whatever in the equation, it's okay. At least now you don't do that.
Yeah, you can do that. The direct costs are obligations to the town, so what we've done in the past is we've always made those that responsible to one department only so that we can have better control over an obligatory payment as for, say, retirement or health insurance. So, but sometimes do it, sometimes supplement...
And across the board. Sometimes take their employee benefits and fully load the departments.
I just, yeah, I just look at it from a transparency perspective.
Which was one of the calculations originally, before you changed it in 2013. OPEB at the time, probably 10 years ago, was not as high as it was right now.
We weren't even doing it 10 years ago.
That's why it's...
I know, I know.
I mean, that's the, that's the problem.
But it was in there, and, you know, if they didn't budget for it, then you didn't, it wasn't put in at the time.
No, no city or town had it, had it in 10 years ago. None. That was a big snafu everywhere, that that wasn't even being addressed.
You know, it needs to be there, so it's nothing I can go away, I'm not saying that many...
And actually, it should be in with each department because it takes care of the people that retire from those departments.
Yeah.
So that should actually, is true to their departments.
Yeah, that seems like the only wiggle room in this calculation is the A1 and A2, you know, the indirect costs and the salaries. Yeah, salaries and expenses, you know. I think maybe you could try to argue in that area, but the direct costs and the OPEB, I mean, those are kind of fixed, you know, whether you, however you take it out this way or direct from the funds.
I mean, allocations are always problematic, you're always going to have situations where people can take a contrary viewpoint.
True.
And say, there's no way that X number of people are really costing the town that amount of money. I've always been a fan of come up with a methodology and stick with it, just be consistent.
Yeah, I'm not arguing to change it, I just don't, I just didn't understand the rationale of why we did it this way versus some other way.
Now later on, when we get to talking about the warrant, we're going to try to fix some of the difficulties we experienced with setting the recap this particular year, and it has everything to do with how we treat the administrative charges. We've got to come up with a better methodology for presenting this in the budget when we go to town meeting. So we'll talk a little bit more about transparency and the allocation of sewer, water, Hadley Media to the General Fund in order to take care of the obligations.
Okay, go on to the copy FY '20.
Well, can we just pause there for a moment? So I think, and I think I'm the one that asked David a while back to bring more information because there've always been a lot of questions about the enterprise chargebacks, and they do come up every, every budget cycle. Usually, and we have a DPW director, so probably going to really be coming up again, you know, when he sinks his teeth into it. Does anybody have any major concerns right now? I mean, wouldn't preclude us from making a methodological, is the word, but change a methodology at some point, but...
Well, I guess it would depend on how you want to revise it, you know.
Yeah, I mean, the question is who's going to go with it.
I'm not exactly sure which way to go. I mean, they came up with this, Linda, you were on the Finance Committee at the time, right, when we came up with this original one? So do you have any thoughts or inputs on if there's anything out there that we should be doing differently?
I mean, you don't because, you know, you think it's a high percentage, and whatever percentage you don't allocate fairly over is borne by the rest of the departments. I mean, no matter how you look at it, a third of our payroll is, well, it's highway, which includes, I don't know how much of highway is, I'm not, what percentage would sewer and water be of highway?
Like 4%?
Two thirds of it?
Watering.
Two thirds of DPW? Two thirds of DPW is water and sewer?
When they created the DPW, that's when everything got split three ways, which is not direct at all.
Right, so, okay, so it's pretty even, it's like 2/3 of DPW is water and sewer.
Because a lot of the highway that should have come out of General Funds are now coming out of water and sewer, the way they split it, third, third, third.
Well, I don't know about that.
I know about that, that's fact.
Yeah, but what I know is that a third of the payroll is DPW, so a third of it, I mean, we have to start with there. So whether, John, 2/3 of that is appropriate or not is something that would be beyond what, you know, I could...
So that 1/3 is actually cut into...
Taxes.
Taxes, but 3 1/3 taking out of each department?
Yes.
Is what you're saying?
Yes.
So it's 1/3 of the budget, but they're actually taking a third from each separate entity?
And a lot of times, it's not, it has nothing to do with the other two departments. It's just Robin Peter to pay Paul is all you're doing. You know, you're subsidizing the highway departments for the water and sewer.
So the issue you're raising is not where it is in relation to the rest of the town, but within the DPW budget?
Within the DPW. When they created a DPW, we created this million dollar problem.
So that's, that to me, a different issue than what we've been looking at, so I'll, you know, that's the Select Board to take it.
So I just wanted to make sure I understand what John's saying. So just, let's just take you as an example. So I'm assuming you're assigned to sewer.
Yeah.
Right. So is this right, Linda? So John is one of the, he's part of that percentage that we're looking at that says sewer department payroll, that would include John. And are you saying, John, that because you're not 100% sewer, there are times where you're plowing and you're doing other things?
No, those, those are separated into the highway or the snow budget, but a third of that now is coming out of sewer.
A third, a third of what?
Your 1/3, 1/3, 1/3 of Department of Public Works is split three ways. So even though I'm...
But it's not an even split.
Even though I'm working 40 hours for sewer, if and when I do plow snow, it's coming out of highway.
That's what I was just asking.
Which only 1/3 of that is coming out of highway, the other 2/3 is coming out of water and sewer.
For snow plowing?
Where are you getting the figures from? You're taking 1/3 and 1/3 and 1/3 from the start for Department of Public Works.
But there's a snow and budget removal in the DPW.
A line item.
Line item in that that covers your plowing for that, whether or not it's, it doesn't come out of sewer when you're plowing.
Like the DPW director, isn't, don't you take his salary and...
Yeah, 1/3, 1/3.
So that's, is that what you mean?
The assistant.
Yeah, you're not talking about individuals assigned to them.
Yeah, she used me specifically for the comparison.
So you're direct, yes. So you're clean, yes, everybody else.
And most are assigned to one or another, that there are some that are split, and some cover the other shifts, and then it comes out of the other budget.
And that's what I'm saying. When they created the Department of Public Works, that's when they created the problem.
But Amy is referring to a certain set, certain salaries and other expenses that are, belong to the DPW are split in thirds.
But in those budgets, and just, even as she compares it to the snow and ice and highway, it's still, that 1/3 of that budget still comes out of all three, through the DPW, it's split that way.
So when we're talking about these salaries, the water department, somewhere in there, if you go to like the A1 slide, somewhere in that $309,000 is a third of the DPW director's salary.
Yeah, administration. It's to most of the administration costs.
Right, but so, doesn't it make sense that the DPW director is responsible for water and sewer and that some allocation should go to them?
Yeah, no, I understand that, absolutely, it's correct. But the way, when, when this was all originally thought, all this, all these equations weren't there yet, and somebody just took 1/3, 1/3, 1/3 out of the sky and created a DPW.
Okay.
It was the only fair way to do it, but now it's costing us in the water and the sewer through the enterprise funds. And originally, they put the enterprise funds together so the general government wouldn't get that money, so it was originally interpreted for those departments to get that money and hold it for capital expenditures. So if there was a water break, if there was a sewer break, if there was major improvements that needed to be done, it could have, could be used out of those funds.
And so sewer reserves are, water reserves are.
Yes, yes. That's what, that's how it was all designed to work originally before the DPW was formed and we created this other problem.
So you're arguing basically that the, since water and sewer are not exactly a third of what the DPW does, then say...
We're offsetting the budget for the highway rate.
Right, so you're saying that maybe the director shouldn't be paid a third from each one, maybe it should be paid, you know, a quarter from...
Or maybe it should be dictated on like number of employees, yeah, yeah.
But then you can also argue, what the heck we're not doing, he's actually almost 100% sewer.
Right.
How much is Sharon doing? Was she, she's probably 75, so you can get down to those granular allocations, but then that starts to create another problem because then you reassign somebody and then you're arguing about it, so.
I think it, you know, probably will be worthwhile if you wanted to take a look at another model to see what would, you know, actually work or whatever, but we're not going to solve it tonight for sure.
No, and, you know, what I wonder is, I think that...
Amy, did you have any take on it?
No, I mean, I always thought the one, it seemed to me like the 1/3, 1/3 would work, but I'm not part of that department to know really how much time does the director spend at those other two, or I don't know the job duties of those people who are affecting the salaries, is it, are those realistic numbers or not? We'd probably look at the director to say, are these, can you take a second look to make sure, you know, this is true?
Originally, I mean, you had a superintendent in each department that were 100% for that department, water, sewer, and highway, you know? Then you threw the director in and foreman and took all, all the semi-management positions out of the departments, so, you know, it's not, it's still not right. It needs adjusting.
But I think, I'm not so sure this is the problem. I think the real issue people have is the cost of sewer, the cost of water, the fact that our reserves are down, the pricing of it, not wanting, clearly not wanting to have to absorb significant price increases in short order, and the whole conversation we just had when we were looking at the rates. And in the absence of having a better solution to that, people are kind of coming back here saying, oh, wait a minute, you know, maybe we're overallocating. We could argue about this all day long. I think there's a bigger issue, which is how are we going to address water and sewer before?
I said it right along, you know, on capital expenditures should come out of taxation through town meeting, you know, for water repairs, for sewer repairs, because the portion of town that has sewer and most of the town that has water, you know, are just barely keeping up with their budgets right now and their operating costs and their OPEB and their insurance.
But if there's, if there's a problem on somebody's sewer line that's on sewer, they sure don't mind us using the sewer enterprise to fix those sewers.
I understand.
Because that's what it's there for and they paid for it.
But like the sleet lining down by the malls, that should come out of taxation, it really should, and not affect the money that we have for real emergency, unless you consider it an emergency.
So I'm just wondering if that's the conversation that maybe we should be having and move away from this.
You still got 1904 water lines in the ground that really need to be replaced, up through Bay Road, South Maple Street, all that old cast iron line needs to be replaced.
And we've been talking about it since I've been here for 16 years.
No, we did, we did West Street and Bay Road over here, we got rid of all that flooring.
Yeah, but we haven't done South Maple over there or up towards, going the other way on Bay Road, so, yeah. I mean, we've done some, but we haven't done a whole lot. And we've replaced lines on Route 9, which we're still in the process of doing too, so, you know, slowly but surely, things are getting done a little bit more than what they had been.
You know, and on the water side, I'd still like to do something with them, Mount Warner Wells, that's been, we've been drinking that water for 60 years and there was nothing wrong with it, we then need to filter it. You know, if there's some way we can figure out what we can do with those two wells up there, if we need to treat it or filter it at some point, then, you know, maybe that's what we should do. We've got plenty of water.
We should, we should retest them for the percolate and see...
Yep, the state wanted them retested for quite some time now, and it hasn't been done.
Put that on the 2019 agenda, right?
I think that's in the capital plan, well preconditioning for Mount Warner.
No, you're reconditioning Bay Road wells.
Yeah, but I think in the future capital plan, we have the Mount Warner wells lined up. I can't remember what year it is.
Right now we're 2019.
I can remember, I know where I am now.
All right, let's go.
But you're coming up.
I, I hear you. So let's, let's go on to the next part of the tri board here.
Is that the warrant or the COLA?
Do you want to talk quickly about the COLA?
Okay. So the budget instructions have been delivered to all the departments and divisions. In the budget instructions, the, the select board were going to make a decision about COLA adjustments for the non-union personnel. Did a quick survey with towns of our size. The results are there and they go from the range of 2% to, it's not here, but the Social Security Administration COLA is 2.8. We've given at least that to most of the unions and we've also allowed step increases for the unions. So for parity, so I make a recommendation that we give a COLA and a step. See if we can build that into the town meeting warrant.
Is that on the next part of the, on our agenda to vote or do you need to have a vote on it now?
Well, I figure that you all want to discuss it first.
Do you have any?
I have a question. Can you, you just talked about COLA and step. I've always thought about step increases as when you have a compensation system that somebody becomes eligible for a step, either based on, like, you know, in the schools, they actually have the grid where you have the master's degree, master's class 30, that kind of thing. But in most companies, you get a step increase typically based on, you know, longevity of some kind, right? So year one, year two, year three, you get step, step, step. Maybe you skip it for a while and another step after five years, that kind of thing. So for the non, non-union and non-school personnel, when we talk about step increases, what are we talking about? Because it seems like some of these people get them, sometimes they don't. How do we know where people even?
I thought some of the contracts are not in anywhere.
Most of the contracts have steps in them.
Yeah, they have a step, lose, they have a step and you move up and drop one at the bottom. We, I don't believe we've given a step increase for three years. And the concerns by the select board has always been a budgetary one.
No, but I mean, what, what does that actually mean for somebody? So let's say?
So the step is three and a half percent plus the COLA.
So everybody, every step is a three and a half percent step, no matter what position you're in? So if we were flush with cash and, and you started as an employee in year one, no matter what job you had, you would auto, and I know steps max at a certain point, but when you start, you, you would come in theoretically, wherever you came in on the grid, every year you would automatically get a three and a half percent increase plus a COLA.
That's how it's been exercised in the past.
Years of service or something would buy originally.
We got away from it when we started awarding COLAs and sometimes step increases at the fall town meeting. And that's, that's a process that we should, hey, get away from. We should be giving these increases at the annual town meeting.
Shouldn't it be a set schedule though, based on longevity, things like that, rather than just whatever the board feels like for a year? I mean, it's kind of.
Well, because we always weren't able to give a step increase on a lot of it, that we're only able to do the COLA. So a lot of employees only got the COLA.
I know, we had this discussion 10 times.
Four years?
There hasn't been any steps since I got here.
So, so four years with no step right now for people that are non-union?
But I do have a question. I mean, I know that we did put in for the, to review salaries, where they are, where they should be. You know, I think that, I'm listening to some of these and a lot of good arguments, but it sounds to me like it's similar to your situation where you don't have a rhyme and a reason for what you're doing and you don't have a good methodology for how you're giving the steps.
Yeah.
And I see what happened to the senior center with the last meeting, that they didn't feel like they were fair and that this department, the library, had an increase and they should be fair with them and why are they not fair? So now we did give an increase to the senior center and gave them the step increase. But now about the other departments and is it fair and who are you comparing yourselves to?
Each, each department, a good point, each department should be addressed separately because in the water and the sewer and the highway, if you've got credentials, then I can see a step raised. If you've got another license in your pocket, then you're worth another 50 cents an hour or whatever, whatever it may be.
However we do it, we have to have a methodology and you have to have it printed.
I know we, we had this discussion before too about credentials.
That's that, and to that, that's the DPW's contracts, John. Your, your contracts should cover that with what, what you're able to do. But we're talking right now about.
No, but I mean, it's out of precedence throughout the whole town.
Well, right now we're talking about non-union and what people have to acquire to have their jobs, which are classes and different things that they're required to, mandated to go to.
The continuing education stuff is crazy now for all licenses.
Right. And if you're talking about step equals this amount, you have to be careful when you're raising the amount because if you keep the step, as we have recently, in the same place and then you're paying that, when that person's no longer there, that's what that step is worth then. And that's not fair to everyone else who may have been here for 15 years.
Yeah, making do.
So step eight doesn't mean anything really.
I agree with you that the right thing to do is to build, you know, the increases into the budget so it's predictable for folks, you know, go, go, I mean, there's no question that's the right thing to do. But this whole step thing and the, the analysis that we haven't yet embarked on, it's on the agenda tonight. I mean, a COLA, I'm more comfortable making a decision on, but the whole step thing is just, I don't know. I'm struggling with that.
So what would the board like to see to make a decision, step, COLA, COLA, step only? What would be the way to move forward?
I mean, I was going to say we are doing this, the compensation classification plan. I mean, maybe we can use that as a benchmark and then decide this a little bit better once we get the results of that back. I mean, I was kind of hoping we'd have something a little before we had to make a decision on this because that's important to kind of feel for where we are in the comparison to the surrounding communities. You know, making sure people are getting paid equal amounts and then kind of get a plan from there, but.
COLA I'd be okay with, but a step until we have a wage study done to see where we are in relation to, you know, what we're currently paying people versus what they should be being paid. I don't think it really serves a purpose to give them step increases right now.
Can we get that done before annual town meeting so that we could incorporate it into?
That's part of the, the write-up of the classification plan, RFP, is that we want them to start early and we want them to finish on a particular date.
So when is that going to start?
Well, let's review the, the RFPs if you like it.
Okay.
And then we can get it out the door tomorrow morning.
Okay. So we'll do that at further on in the meeting?
And I'm just imagining that the outcome of that is not going to be crystal clear because you're going to have, you're going to have recommendations, but then we're going to have to figure out, how do we get from here to there? And quite honestly, I'm, I bet my bottom dollar, it's going to be a multi-year process to figure it out because some people may wind up, some positions may wind up being effectively frozen. Other ones may get a market adjustment and we may not be able to afford it right away and that may get built into a fall tech, so.
So we need to straighten it out at some point. It's got to be done.
Yeah.
Because it does, it doesn't seem fair.
There's some amount of people that are going to be happy and there's some people that aren't.
It doesn't seem fair that just because you're union, that you keep getting all these increases where the non-union is, is getting the short staff. So that seems tough. So if we aren't able to do something like this, maybe we can look, if for some reason we didn't do the step increase, maybe we can do an extra or do the, on the high side of the COLA. You know, instead of maybe a smaller COLA, do a higher COLA.
So you're saying do?
Well, you're, you're telling me the COLA was anywhere between 2%, what, 2.8% or something like that?
And that's Westminster, so.
I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that maybe we do higher.
But are you suggesting do a higher COLA now, then do the wage study and?
I just don't know if you're going to be able to give people what they need for annual.
And then if we did a higher COLA, they would have, everyone would have to understand that they may be frozen for longer if they find out that they are way above the market price.
I mean, I'd rather keep the COLA kind of aligned with market, which looks like, at least for these municipal, is 2%.
We're only on the web.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so do we want to just say, let's do a COLA of 2% for now and then evaluate?
Then adjust it after annual meet, or is it adjust it after annual town meeting?
Once we, once we're able to adopt the compensation classification plan or whatever, implement it, review it.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
So these nine towns that were looked at for the FY '20 COLAs, why were those towns chosen? It seems like they were a little bit, as far as geographic location or side.
Yeah, Hatley is a little, it's a little difficult to compare to other towns. So we don't compare well, say, Sunderland and Grandy or some of the smaller towns. So I tend to cast the net a little wider in terms of town EQV, that's their tax base population, distance from a large metropolis. And putting the question out there, these are the responses I got.
Okay.
Go to town warrant?
Does it, does it?
Oh, you want to do that? Do you want to, well, I'm waiting for a vote.
Tonight or do you want to wait?
I'll make a motion to go 2% right now. We're all non non-union.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous with the?
Finances committee, Tom Good.
Yeah, Tom Good. I think they should have some, I definitely think.
Well, we need to do some work on it for sure, yeah. I mean, we've been talking about it for four years or so.
That's coming up, coming up. So the time that's remaining, I've prepared a preliminary warrant for the annual town meeting. I believe it has 21 articles on it and that's probably going to increase. I don't know that we need to get into this in exhaustive detail tonight, but I think that we can move the football a little bit. First of all, I'm asking for the select board to open the warrant with a closure date of February 13.
Motion please.
Motion to open the warrant?
Just a second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
With the closing date?
With the closing date.
Thank you.
All right. So the first six articles are the consent agenda. They're items that don't require debate, they're, they're stock items that show up every year. One is that we can accept and expend grants. Two is that we can accept and expend Chapter 90 money for roads and bridges. Three is short-term borrowing. If we are ever in a position of cash shortage, we can borrow against short-term, within one year, for future anticipated revenue. We've never had to do this, but it's always nice to have this in your back pocket in case something goes boom. Article number four, fund balances. This is our sweep-up article. Whenever we have projects that are completed and a little bit of money left over, we like to sweep that back into the pots that they came from. Or if there are borrowing articles, to reduce the borrowing authorization in order to clean up the part of accounts. The filters for the water treatment plant, this is a 10-year program to achieve $260,000 of funding. We've put $26,000 away in a special stabilization account. This payment is the third of 10 payments.
So much for that.
So much for that. A third of 10, if we do this, we'll have about $78,000 set aside for that project. CPA administrative, this is a, this is their setup article to provide them with the allocation of the CPA monies into the three pots that are required by law, open space housing and historic preservation, as well as giving them an expense account so they can talk to lawyers or do seminars. So those six are the consent agenda. Are there any questions or concerns about any of these? Can I get a vote of recommendation from the select board? I know that you don't have a finance.
Can you make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Is there any information that we don't have now that we'll have later?
There's an, each article has an article, a motion and an explanation.
But I mean, nothing, nothing is possibly going to change between now and?
I don't think so. I mean, I certainly bring this back to your attention if there's been any change.
I think we're just putting it on the consent agenda at this point, just making those be our consent agenda.
Yeah, because any detail about the grants or anything like that or about this blanket?
It's just a blanket so that we don't have to call town meeting every time we get a $500 grant to either accept or to expend that money.
We're just making the outline of the consent agenda, the structure right now.
Let's hear a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right. So here we get into the, the real meat of the town meeting. The first one is a prior year invoice of $1,468. This is owed to ETNL for the water project that was associated with the Route 9 widening. They made a mistake in a invoice a long time ago. They shortchanged themselves. We closed out that project, closed out the borrowing, closed out the grant, the whole project was done. And then a year later, this, this came up from Department of Transportation, $1,400. We tried to make it go away, no dice. So I said, the only thing left I can do is put it on the warrant for payment. Requires a nine-tenths majority vote from town meeting. So moving right along.
Wasn't it last fall that we just gave all that money back?
Yes, indeed.
From that project?
Yep.
Good job.
It's not money back, it's ability to borrow.
I thought I just heard this somewhere before last fall.
Okay. Articles eight, nine, 10, 11. This used to be unified in one article, the omnibus budget. We have tasked omnibus budgets with one article for 13 budget cycles. Everything went fine. The 14th budget that we put together with one article for the article motion, we had fits getting the Department of Revenue to accept our information and was a cause of concern for setting the tax rate on the tax capitulation, recapitulation sheet. The cause of the change was a formulary change on, by the Department of Revenue on the recap sheet on page three, just the way that the enterprise funds are presented along with the administrative charges. So we had to jump through a whole bunch of hoops. So in order to avoid that kind of problem in the future, I'm proposing that we change the way that we do the omnibus budget. I normally like to consolidate things, so this is against my better nature to take one article and make four of them out of it, but I think this, this is the way to go forward. We went to several towns that have enterprise funds and looked at the models that they, that they offered. We're going to war game this, you know, have the financial management team sit down and just walk through and make sure that if we're to pass it in this form, we will get a tax rate in a timely manner for FY 2020.
This actually addresses some of the presentation arguments we've had in the past where there was. This actually addresses some of the presentation arguments we've had in the past where there was confusion. So I don't like going from one to four, but I think it will actually be more clear.
Yeah, there'll be a lot of questions on town meeting floor, why are we doing it this way? We've always done it that way forever. Department of Revenue...
We just be a couple.
Yeah, we can get you the names.
Somebody doesn't swallow their pick, they'll be upset, there's one.
So one article for the omnibus budget general fund, and then one article each for the three enterprise funds.
Okay, so to be determined, so we're not voting on these tonight?
No.
So all of these actually, from eight to 16, are to be determined?
Yep.
Okay.
Number 12 is the capital article. We have two requests from the school department that took a vote on the girls' locker room and the unit system for Hopkins Academy. We're going to have, Chris and I have talked about this, Chris being the chair of the capital planning committee, we're going to have a conversation with the school system to see if this is something that can be deferred, because they're trying to fast-track these two projects for the summertime. This presents a number of logistical issues, which are going to be very, very difficult.
What was the second one? I heard the girls' locker room and...
Univents.
Univents.
Don't ask me what a univent is.
Vents in the room for heating. They were trying to change those up.
Just on capital, it came to my attention that in the fall, we had a couple of capital items, I have three items, that differed between the values we had in our capital committee and what got put on the town meeting warrant.
Yep.
So I'm wondering if we can do anything in the spring to remedy that? It's about, it was one, two, three projects, and it was about a $14,000 difference in total.
We voted short.
We were voting short.
Well, let me explain a little bit of this. We have money set aside for capital projects, and we appropriated only enough at town meeting in order to be able to cover the projects using this other source of funding, which didn't require a meeting vote, because we already had one of those. So the money is there.
Okay.
It just doesn't show up as allocated vote at that fall town meeting, because we already approved that money in a prior town meeting.
Okay.
All right, so be happy to sit down with you and watch.
Okay, yeah, yeah, maybe I can walk through that with you later.
Yeah. Hadley Kids Incorporated, this is a project which is still in development, but Hadley Kids Incorporated has a sum of money somewhere in the neighborhood of $100,000 that they would like to transfer.
We already voted yes on that, so now you're taking it to town meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So...
And 14 is the same thing. We already voted to expand the premises.
We voted for on-premise. All right, so we ran out of on-premise liquor license. Just a little bit of context for everybody, the state sets a quota on the number of types of licenses that we have for alcoholic beverages. We were running out of on-premise licenses, as we go into a restaurant, sit down, have beer, bottle of wine, whatever it happens to be. My favorite whiskey, sour. But in order to keep the economic expansion going, we've got 12 additional licenses, six all-alcoholic and six malted wine, only four sit-down in restaurants or a pub. But we have run out of the off-premise licenses, Pride was our last one. And the business community is beginning to ask questions about whether we can have additional licenses. So this is here to add three new licenses, and just a flip of the coin, I asked for one all-alcoholic and two malted wine. I'm not wedded to that at all, whatever you guys want to do.
Can we make it a multiple of medical marijuana or retail marijuana?
You already missed a bolt on that. You see all the revenue you just left floating away?
We should have five times.
We could all drive-through, combined with a gas station.
So when I had talked to David about this, I, part of my rationale behind it was, this is money we're leaving on the table as far as licensing revenue, tax revenue, whatever, so why not get as many as we can?
But don't forget that it ties into also, as many liquor licenses as you have, you can also have marijuana licenses, so...
Who brought up that question last year? Break it apart, huh?
Well, let's dwell a little bit in the weeds on the marijuana part, okay? So the restriction, the prohibition on adult-use marijuana is tied to 20% of your available off-premise licenses, your package store licenses, so we have seven right now. 20% of seven rounding up is two. If we add three, to bring that up to 10, 20% of 10 is still two. Okay, but the law is a little unclear here. The law says that the 20% restriction applies to licenses issued through Mass. General Law, Chapter 138, which governs liquor licenses. Adding more liquor licenses is done by a special act of legislation, not Mass. General Law 138. So this is untested territory, but you may be able to increase the number of those licenses, because they're not explicitly mentioned in the...
Which licenses are you talking about?
This would be the off-premise licenses. So I've got a limit of three, but it's possible we could go higher. I'm not sure.
We don't have to issue them, right? It just gives us the ability to vote.
This is a legal, this is a legal question. We obviously want to find out what the Attorney General has to say about all of this.
But at 10 right now, that caps us at two, adult-use marijuana, dispensaries, whatever you call them. But if we go to 11, that opens us, if that assumption is wrong, let's say, if we go to 11, then we have 2.1, and we have to round up.
Then you've got to tangle elsewhere, yes.
Unless we separate them. Decouple the ratio.
But we can't do that, right? That was the issue.
You know, and the more you have, if some of these small, non-pop stores sell, and you sell with their licenses, you're taking away from that, too. You know, there's a lot of ins and outs for them, I think. You know, a little bit more restriction, the more licenses you have, the more you're taking away from the people who already have them.
And if they close, do they just come back?
Yes.
Well, it's still, it's nothing set right now, so let's, it's seven o'clock, so let's move on here, and what else?
Article 15, land preservation, I've heard of two projects that are floating out there, I don't have any information. Article 16, we have a couple of ancient maps, what ancient is in 1742 of the town of Hadley. Mind you, town of Hadley included Pelham, Amherst, Hadley, South Hadley, and Hathfield back then. So these maps could be of another town. But they're leather maps, drawn on leather, maybe deer skin, and they need to be curated, so that money is for there for that purpose.
Okay.
Stormwater bylaw, this is required by MS4, planning boards zoning, articles for water, stormwater. Adult-use marijuana, we have a prohibition, which we're monitoring, which is going to expire in June. We have a couple petitioned articles floating around out there. One has to do with the prohibition on the cultivation of adult-use marijuana. And the other one, I don't know what the content is, but I heard that there might be a petition.
Okay. Sounds good, so that the tip of the iceberg for the town warrant, we're just getting started on it, and we'll have plenty of time over the next couple of months to work on it some more. Is there anything else for the tribe board, or are we all set for tonight? Amy, did you have anything for us? Okay. So we will move into our regular scheduled meeting. Are we live yet?
We're live all along on the...
We're live on the web, yeah, we're able to talk with our server, so it's up broadcasting on the TV station right now.
It is?
It's not.
Can they hear us?
They cannot.
They cannot?
They can do nothing. They can watch your community count.
All right. So we have a consent agenda. We have warrants PR 1926, PR 1925, PR 1924, PR 1923, AP 1927, AP 1926S, AP 1926, AP 1925-2, AP 1925, AP 1924, and AP 1924. We have a, which I would like to read, shall I take that out of context? We had, today was a proclamation of what we did for Agnes Banash. She turns 100 years old, was born on January 9, 1919. And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the town of Hadley, by the select board, we have a proclamation of 2019. Whereas Agnes Banash was born on January 19, 1919, to Jacob and Annie Banash in Hadley, Massachusetts. Whereas Agnes joined the United States Army in 1943, where she served as a medical technician, until she was honorably discharged in 1946. Whereas Agnes is a member and past commander of the Old Hadley Legion Post 271. Whereas Agnes is the mother of Michael and grandmother of Matthew. Whereas Agnes is a lifelong resident of the town of Hadley, and whereas she has earned the respect of all with whom she has come in contact, and love and affection of a host of family and friends. Now therefore, we, the select board of the town of Hadley, Massachusetts, do hereby deem it an honor and pleasure to extend this proclamation to Agnes Banash on the occasion of her 100th birthday, with sincere congratulations and best wishes for many happier, productive years. Given this ninth day of January 2019, signed by the board's selectmen. So congratulation, Agnes Banash. We could only hope that we might hit that 100, who knows? All right, and then we also had cemetery bid awards. And we have gravestone marker restoration bid award. Do we have?
We have a letter from the cemetery committee. Gravestone restoration assessment survey, four bids were submitted. Price range of $10,700 to $14,200. Historic gravestone services of New Salem, Massachusetts submitted the low bid, and is the lowest qualified bidder, and the cemetery committee recommends approval of the project to Historic Gravestone Services. And then for the grave marker restoration in Hockedom, three bids for the work were submitted, ranging in price from $9,650 to $21,200. Conserve Art LLC of Hampton, Connecticut submitted the low bid, and is the lowest qualified bidder, and the cemetery committee recommends approval of the Conserve Art bid.
Okay. Do you need a motion on any of that, or no?
We're just doing it all on the consent.
Consent agenda, okay. We have a Hadley Police Department retirement of Henry Byte, who has been a longtime dispatcher for the town of Hadley, probably since he was a young man. I can't say what age he was, but he has now retired from his job at the University of Massachusetts. Therefore, he has to retire from his job here in Hadley, but he will be coming back as a part-time dispatcher also. He has been a most dedicated employee that we've had for dispatcher, and we're very happy that he is going to return and fill some time on the night shift as he has been. So, motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And if we have any public comments this evening, anybody? We're all here on business, great. All right, David, do you want us, I know the...
You've got a lot of people waiting here, why don't we just jump over to the school building?
There's a 7:15 appointment, though.
Okay.
Don't we have to wait?
Don't have to wait, but...
How about, Christian, how about you jumping in here for Valley Bike?
Valley Bike Share, all right. So, as you all might know, Valley Bike Share is a series of electric bikes spread out to Pioneer Valley, I guess. Right now, there's some in Northampton, some in Amherst, some at UMass. And the Valley Bike Share had approached the town of Hadley to see if we would be interested at all in participating in Bike Share program as well. You know, it has, it definitely offers an alternative to public transportation and accessible form of transportation for many people. A lot of the bikes that get ridden around Northampton and Amherst are for tourism purposes, more so than people commuting and that kind of thing. East Hampton is also signing on to this new round of people joining Valley Bike Share, and they were able to fund five new stations with a housing choice grant. And now Valley Bike is applying for a new CMAC grant, and they want us to be a part of this grant to put two stations in Hadley. A lot of, originally the funding for Valley Bike Share was also through a CMAC grant, and that's how they kind of originally got off the ground. In fact, I think it is competitive. People are really looking at getting the stations in their communities, but I believe Amherst or UMass, one of them, gave up one of their possible stations on this CMAC grant to Hadley, because they see us as an important link on the bike path.
Or did they expect that to be set up?
So... So, what is needed from us is to sign on to this CMAC grant. So we would have to sign a memorandum of understanding with Valley Bike Share that we are interested in participating in it. We would be put down on the grant application, and that grant application would pay for the station and the bikes that would go on the station. And we would need some additional funds to do the actual installation. So we'd have to put in a concrete pad to place the station on, and then have a 24-hour electrical hookup nearby that we would send a drop-down to, to power the station. So the pad is $3,000 to $4,000, it seems like, and the electrical hookup really depends on how close we would be to that electrical point. So if there's a street light that's on 24 hours right next to it, it's easy. If it's across the parking lot or in a remote location, it's a lot harder, so that's all relative.
So where did they think they would like this station?
So, yeah, we had this handout.
Central mall, Whole Foods.
Yeah.
Whole Foods, Mount Firm's Mall.
Okay.
And are any of these businesses willing to sponsor it, fund this, sponsor it?
Okay, so this is another thing, and I talked to David about it, and I still haven't gotten clarification from Valley Bike Share, but each station requires a corporate sponsor to handle the maintenance of that station. It's a, what he was telling me, Chris, from Valley Bike Share, was it's $12,000 a year, and they're looking for three-year commitments for someone to sponsor that. Now, it gets a little tricky, because if we, as the select board, or somebody from our select board, goes to Whole Foods and says, we need $12,000 for the station, that could get into sticky ethical territory. So I'm still not quite sure how we can work that out with them.
Pride with all their electrical cars, they might want to put in a station there, I think that would be ideal.
Yeah.
Is that any town employee would have a conflict of interest?
I don't know. And I've reached out to Valley Bike Share to see what their experience has been. Because that would apply to anybody in Massachusetts. And other towns are sponsoring these, giving sponsors to these stations.
Other towns are sponsoring on town property.
Right, Amherst is right there in the center, you know?
South Hadley's at their police station, at their town common. I see a few of them around. But if they were to be put on private property here, like we said, maybe Quarters or the bike shop there. Or Hampshire Mall or Mountain Farms Mall, where we wouldn't have anything to do with it.
That was my only question on here. It says, "Norwatt Rail Trail at Hadley Center." Just wanted to make sure we weren't kind of sticking in the middle of the commons.
That would be the Hadley Depot there, maybe. Or the library, I was thinking too. Yeah, yeah.
Or could, I mean, potentially, could we have a volunteer committee? You know, that?
Yeah.
Did the soliciting or whatever is needed that could keep us clean?
Yeah, so somehow, other towns have been able to do this. And so, Valley Bike Share can tell us, "Okay, so the model that worked well in East Hampton," and I'm just making this up, is something that we could follow. But having a direct connection to a corporate sponsor by municipal official, municipal employee, gets us into ethical territory that we don't want to be in.
So, we don't want to send Tim, Mike, and Mike knocking on doors?
Yeah.
That'd probably be a bad idea. "I'm here for your inspection. Give us $12,000."
Sponsor this.
So, as part of the sponsoring process, could we get, if we could find someone who's interested, could they pay for the concrete pad, the electric, that kind of stuff? So that way, there wouldn't be any initial costs to the taxpayers because then you would have a heck of a lot more support.
Yeah, that's, that's possible. And I was gonna just bring up too, that we do receive, you know, that was around $140,000 from PBTA last year. Public transportation reinvestment in our community. We could use some of that money to provide other sources of public transportation. Right now, that's just going into our general fund. So, there's also, David let me know about the Uber fee that we get for Ubers in the area, which is around $4,000 a year.
You're talking about earmarking existing. But I mean, we actually are using that money to fund our operating budget.
We are, we are, yeah. We are using it for that right now. But we could earmark it for putting back into the community for public transportation.
Uber money is not to be used for the general funds. It's supposed to be used specifically for enhancing public transportation. So, that would be, that could cover the concrete pad, $4,000.
I would still somehow try to find out how they, how they approach private. Because, like I said, if they're gonna put it on Hampshire Mall, it's gonna be on Hampshire Mall land. If you put it on Mountain Farms Mall, it's gonna be on Mountain Farms Mall land. It's not gonna be on town property. Or it'll be on state property on a bike path.
But in order for the grant to go through, they still need the backing of the town?
Yeah, and we would have to have a big, big... Part of it's, you know, it's through DOT. So, we'd have to have a show of support from our JTC member, who I assume is the DPW director.
Yeah, maybe you can get a whole district too and find out how they're doing with these other towns. Maybe the state's got a little loophole.
I mean, if we wanted to learn more about it, I can invite Chris to one of our meetings. And we can learn more about it. He'd be much better versed in it than me.
He has some other information about private entities, you know?
Yeah.
The public-private programs that they have out in the state are working pretty well in some places.
So, let's, let's have him come in and at another meeting.
I mean, is anybody opposed to pursuing it?
As long as it's not gonna cost the town anything.
Yeah, as long as it don't cost the town anything.
That's, that's my thing.
I mean, we could go on it tonight to go forward as long as it doesn't obligate us to move forward with it. Because if we're just signing on to the grant application, why not get moving on it?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we can look at that right now. And if we, he actually said the CMAC grant, you know, they already got one. So, are they gonna get another one or not? It's, they don't know for sure, so...
So, make a motion to, to show support on behalf of the town of Hadley to pursue the grant.
Sure.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And not too bad. Municipal Building Committee, welcome. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. So, would you like to take the floor, David?
Sure.
And tell us what your meeting entailed last night?
Yep, and I'm not calling to order our own committee meeting. We don't have a quorum, so...
Okay.
Last night, we met subsequent to your request for us to establish a, essentially, a scope of work for what could be a clerk of the works position to manage the overall program of buildings that are going to be constructed. I think in one of your late December meetings, I sent you a list. It was a rather lengthy list of all the scope items, which I felt were, was necessary, recognizing that they were somewhat duplicative of the OPM, individual OPM's responsibilities. You all asked us to kind of boil that down a little bit, think about it, and also meet as a committee, which we had not had a scheduled meeting up till that point. So, we did meet last night. Christian was in attendance for your group. And essentially, what I did, and I apologize if, have you all seen it? Or do you not have a copy of the table that I created?
We, we got it. I forwarded it to David.
Everybody's got a paper copy or something to follow along with. Okay. I have one. So, there's, I have about seven or eight copies if anybody else wants to...
Could I just, I'll take one just to, can I share yours?
Mm-hmm.
I have it, but it's kind of cut off. Okay.
Anyone else?
I'm good. I'm good.
Yeah, Jim. Okay, so, essentially, I made a couple of columns here and started to break down all the activities, which I recognize are necessary to, for someone to manage. And, and I think part of our discussion last night had more to do with exactly how a person or a group might be empowered to act as a representative for the town in certain types of disputes or even just managing the program. We have two OPMs. Both OPMs report to building committees, which I believe were not appointed or elected official. I mean, so, the marching, the way, the way that these committees report up to the Select Board is, it's a little bit jagged in terms of a hierarchy, right? So, we're running through some scenarios by which, you know, if we're building these two projects, we have two very capable OPMs working on this. But, but the work is all in parallel. If there's a discussion or dispute over something happening, something needs to be prioritized over another, how is that kind of dispute brought up? Through someone else who is empowered to act on behalf of the Select Board? Or at least get the right people in the room to discuss this and act quickly to resolve these issues? So, I think that was part of our concerns, you know? Who that person is? Is that a town employee? Is that the project consultant that we have through our task order assignments? Is it a more overarching responsibility of the, excuse me, of the OPM that we have that's acting on behalf of the town for multiple projects, which is Colliers? Or, or is it someone else? And Gary Berg's name came up as a, as a possibility. And so, you know, there was discussion without really a lot of resolution there. I think really what we needed to maybe more clearly understand was exactly what the scopes of work are currently for the two OPMs. You should know, the OPMs did both take a look at this document. And back in early December, kind of, you know, looked at it and said, "This is, this is more or less in line with what our expectations are of our scope." So, in this scenario, I tried to sort of boil it down and say, you know, the OPMs are going to act on, you know, in accordance with their scopes of work and perform what they need to perform. They're gonna provide schedules for you, the Select Board, to review. It'd probably be a good idea for somebody to put together a master schedule that shows all the building activities happening on one piece of paper, which we really not had through this process. We have, of course, the activities that are happening here at Town Hall, pertaining to the renovation work. Those will have to be managed. And that's part of what I put in the project consultants columns. We have the Goodwin Memorial Library Potential Storage, and how that's gonna be undertaken. So, again, I put that in the project consultants categories. We did discuss this and recognize that there's some concerns over the exact locations of some of these departments and the walls that we're possibly modifying around them. And, you know, if, if we're not past that, if you all are not past it or want us to further communicate with these departments or do additional analysis to understand what their space requirements are, our project consultant Larry Tuttle could, of course, you know, meet with them, interview them, you know, maybe come up with some options to go through. Or if you all say we're past that, we're gonna do what we, what we proposed previously, then fine. But that's on here as well.
So, Larry's the person that we hired originally?
Correct. He's our on-call task order project consultant.
Okay.
And you're comfortable that he has the skill sets to... I mean, have you talked to Larry about all of this, I'm assuming?
We have, we have, yeah. And, and, you know, he could, he could act as a program manager, clerk of the works, or simply undertake task orders like organizing what happens here. You know, our concerns, I guess, maybe are circled around, you know, is this person truly empowered to act, you know, in regard?
Right.
I was doing some thinking just after our meeting today. It's just, it seems to me we have like two phases, right? First phase is get, get ready to get everybody out of the Hooker School and get them out of a Hooker School. And then our second phase is the actual construction phase. And so, just thinking about it, my, my thoughts are, we need somebody like Gary with Larry's help to kind of get everything rolling out of the Hooker School and into here, whether we need to make modifications, you know?
But now, you also have to keep in mind that Larry does not work, I mean, Gary, Gary Larry, Gary does not work for the Municipal Building Committee. He works for the town of Hadley in the DPW department.
That's right. And he has other responsibilities. So, we want to be conscious of that before we...
But can we, can we vote or have him focus his time more on this municipal building issue?
It's not our job.
Christopher Oakford of Day 3.
Well, I also feel like we need to make progress on this. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm just putting it out there. Because I think we need to make progress on this. And we need a person that's got time to do it.
So, can we, yeah, and I agree with Christian. I mean, this is, time is of the essence. And if we keep discussing this, we're gonna be at the end of next summer already and still talking about it.
Oh, no, they're gonna be moving. They gotta get moving. OTD.
I want to put it to rest, the idea that we're gonna re-interview departments and reorganize things and go back to square one on the...
Oh, no.
I think we're past that. I think that...
I would say so too.
Just need to hear that.
It may not be the most ideal locations, but it's what they got to do to work on.
How long's Larry been with us now?
About two, three years.
Two years, three years? And he's very comfortable with his work. I don't see why we wouldn't use him appropriately.
So, as far as Gary goes, and Tim, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But Gary was hired to deal with municipal building issues. Most of them. And my understanding is that not much of his time has been allowed to work on municipal building issues because he's dead DPW and they've got other tasks for him. So, obviously, we probably need to talk to Mr. Oakford about this. But I think that, I mean, this is a priority here, especially this time of year when the workload is relatively low without snow so far after the DPW.
Wait, your turn. No, it's not.
He's spent a lot of time over the police and fire station with their issues. There's a lot of maintenance issues over there. And then we created the ambulance service, which he's put a lot of time in there also.
No, and I'm not saying that he's not doing any work. I'm just saying that this needs to be the priority because this is gonna cost us big money if we are delayed with the move. And so, maybe tasking him to either the building department or the Municipal Building Committee temporarily.
How would you like to be the one, since you're the...
I'd be happy to.
Contact person for the DPW to talk with Chris and see if we can adjust that.
Is Gary pretty much done with, with what they need to do over police and fire station right now?
Yes.
So, this next project coming up will take up a lot of time.
The last project over there right now is the second-floor HVAC system.
I heard the new pump screwed up.
Can we just take a quick timeout? I just wanna, I'm totally on board that this is a huge priority, okay? But I'm also worried about precedent setting. We do have a DPW director. We have an individual reporting to the DPW director. Granted, the guy just started. I'm sure he's gonna be listening with, with, you know, vehemently, you know, listening and taking into whatever direction the Select Board is setting for him, which is going to be like, we have this imminent issue and we have to get it moving. But I want to be just really careful on the language we're using. I don't want in any way to, as a Select Board, be directing any employee who reports to somebody else to do anything. I think the proper protocol would be for us to engage with our DPW director because he does have another, other duties. So, before we sit here saying, "This is absolutely the priority and only Gary can do it," we better find out what else Gary's not gonna be doing when he's doing this and have a plan for that. I mean, this makes an awful lot of sense. But I just want to be careful that we're not, you know, on a Wednesday night, just sitting here saying unilaterally.
Well, that's why I suggested that David have conversation.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the way to go and not have us...
With him and have him...
But he was hired for municipal building purposes. And this is probably, I would say, the top priority of municipal...
Well, that's a conversation that you can have with Chris.
And find out what else is on his plate, David. That's all I'm saying. Because there've been other times where we assumed and then we found out that all of a sudden all these other balls dropped because the Select Board took action, not really...
I don't think any of us have a problem. But I think I would like you to have conversation with Chris and just see what we can do to get this to happen using Gary and making sure that nothing else needs to get looked at while he's doing this.
So, I think what we need from the Select Board then, and tonight, if possible, so we can move this forward, is to make sure that we have some sort of structure of who he's gonna report to, whether it's the Building Commissioner, whether it's going to be somebody else. Because if, if he is able to spare Gary and get him working, then he should be able to get working on it tomorrow if he's able to, rather than have to wait till our next meeting and decide who he's gonna report to and everything else.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
So, Phil, do you see anything within this now that you've had a chance to look at that? Are there any overlapping jobs that look redundant to you that...
No, I think it's broken down good.
Broken down good.
David asked for me and Mark Sullivan to reply. And this matches up with what we replied to him.
Okay. So, that's good.
I would only comment that this is, this is good. And it's really in line with, when you hold a construction meeting, you have fair representation from professionals like Colliers and Sullivan. But you generally have a client in the room as well, whoever that person is. But you generally have a client in the room as well, whoever that person is. You know, that person really can't be another consultant like Larry Tuttle. It has to be a representative of the town. So I think, you know, putting someone like Gary in that position is really-
He's familiar with all the buildings and the operations right now.
Okay, David, did you?
Gary is a union employee, so the chain of command would be through the DPW director, unless we wanted to take him out of the union temporarily.
Is there a way that he could be through the DPW director? And I'm not saying we're making a decision for Mr. Okafor, but I'm just saying if he along with it-
Delegate the authority.
Yeah, could he delegate the authority to say Tim or somebody else?
Sure, just as long as we have the union contractor in our mind and how that works.
We may want to run it by the union rep just to be-
Yeah, I don't see a problem with this.
You just did it. You've got a union personnel right now in a formative position.
So I'm having to make a motion, and thank you for all of the work. This was very clear. I looked at it, I'm like, oh, that makes sense. You know, breaking apart the responsibilities.
I'm sorry, was it the last minute? We just couldn't talk about it until last night, so there wasn't a lot of fore.
Looks very detailed for us to have something to go on.
So I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation for the Division of Responsibilities as presented by the Municipal Building Committee. Move forward with engaging Larry Tuttle. David, I'm sorry, we find with engaging with him with any procurement?
Yeah, they upped the threshold to 30,000, so we're good.
Moving forward with the hiring of Larry Tuttle and requesting that David, Phil. Phil, as the liaison to the DPW, act on our behalf to work with Mr. Okafor to be certain that we're clear on what Mr. Berg might not be doing if he's doing this or come up with a Plan B to make this happen, including dealing with the union.
Would he report to Tim or to?
Not to Tim.
Not to Tim. He would report.
Tim's going to be inspecting the work that's getting done, so.
Who would he report to?
Christopher Ford.
But I'm saying for the actual building, the coordinated moves and everything else here at Town Hall and-
He'd still be reporting to Chris, wouldn't he?
Well, it's got to go to David, too. I mean, everybody's going to know what's going on throughout these projects.
Yeah, I think, I think that I make sense. The chair makes sense.
Well, then, in that way, then, it also informs the other OPMs for the senior center and the library that you're kept within the loop also of getting things done in a timely fashion, too. So I think, you know, there's quite a bit of sharing here as we move along. And reporting to would be David and the DPW director, who would then share with the OPMs and them and-
Bring all the issues back to the board.
Our meetings.
I'm going to have a monthly meeting or something, or they can come and address the board once a month on progress or whatever.
We have meetings twice a month, if not more, coming up. So there's always going to be that opportunity to be on the agenda.
It's going to stay open on the agenda till it's done at this point.
Chris, did you?
Two comments real quick. One is I want to ask Phil a question for during the construction. And two is we still have to talk about budget for these things. So just to start, Phil, what, where I see, so phase one, I see us kind of having to handle that in-house because we're doing modifications to Town Hall. The move of other people out of the Hooker School, I don't know if that's in your realm or if you're just the seniors?
Right. So my realm would be, once the senior center building's built and occupiable, moving the senior center staff from wherever they're going to be to the senior center building.
And then during the construction-
So just a timeout, that's different from what you told me the other day?
No, I told you the other day that the scope that we have for moved services is to move the senior center staff into the new senior center building.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
And then, a couple of months ago, we were talking at the senior center building committee meeting and you wanted some other, some new subcommittees for during the construction. What are those committees? I don't remember what they were exactly.
So like David Tuge just brought up, you know, at a weekly project meeting, you know, besides me and besides the architect, you'll have like a building committee member or two building committee members there. So we set that up. I can't recall the exact people, but again, Gary Berg might be one of them. Jane or Suzanne might be. So that was that. And then once construction gets underway, you typically have a finance subcommittee to deal with proposed change orders and all that stuff.
Okay. So who's going to be the, because I know when I was on the school building committee, we had a change order or whatever. It went through the OPM and the bills were submitted to the select board at the time for any change orders or anything of that nature. And the bills were submitted to the select board.
It can be, I mean, however you want it to be, you know, so we're going to have monthly payment applications from a general contractor. You know, those can go through the select board, they can go through David, however that needs to be. I'll be the one reviewing them, vetting them. And then proposed change orders, ideally, there's a dollar amount set that the finance subcommittee has the ability to approve, so not to slow down construction. So say, for example, it's a 10 grand cap. And so up to $10,000, that finance subcommittee can approve a certain scope, change order scope, you know, that I vet prior to presenting to them. In the event, we got to keep things moving. But then, you know, if it's not that scenario, you know, monthly finance update can be provided to the select board if it needs to be like that, listing out the proposed change orders and so on.
And I think one concern we had last night, some of the discussion revolved around the library is getting constructed, the senior center is getting constructed.
And the fire station.
Yeah, well, just that site, right? And there's, you've got your two little roads going in there. And what happens when the conflict comes up where a crane's blocking the road and concrete trucks have to come in at the same time? And it's just a cluster and how do you, how do you do that conflict resolution between you?
That's up to them to-
Let me be honest with you, that's up to a general contractor bidding the work. He understands what he's bidding and-
Okay, but do we need another person there to run conflict resolution?
No, I don't feel like you do. But no, yeah, I mean, that's, you're going to have logistic issues of whether it's a wide open site or what we, it's, so no, I don't think you need another one.
Okay, okay. And then my last comment was just for the work that we have to do to Town Hall and possibly moving. I don't know what expenses will be incurred moving. We do need money to do those things and where do we get money from? You know, how do we, I feel like our numbers are, we have a number, but I don't know how solid those numbers are. Yeah, you know, so how do we, do we need to vote that we have a 20, $30,000 budget to do these renovations and move on the Town Hall front? Or do we have available money?
Do we have a good estimate?
I think, this is like the cart before the horse. I feel like if we had, let's say Gary, if we're able to get this, really focus on this, get some very solid numbers, work with you on prevailing wage, all these things, I feel like we can get solid numbers, where right now, I don't know. I'm looking to Tim as, do we have good numbers to proceed forward?
So we have, there's three areas in the Town Hall that there's going to be some modifications to. Gary did go out, go get solicited some bids. We do have some estimates on the work. So it's broken down into what we call construction, electrical, and some plumbing. We're going to use our electrical, I would assume we're going to use our contract electrician. He's talked to him already about that and how much that would cost. He talked to the plumber that we have, figured out what those costs are. So we have a good concrete number.
Why do we need a plumber for moving? What are we doing with a plumber? Fill me in.
You're referring to the modifications to Town Hall, not move costs.
But what would be the plumber be involved with the move cost?
It could be some heating pipes. We don't know.
We're not changing any, anything within the structure of the building.
In some of the walls. And there is some piping that might have to be modified.
I've already ran into this trouble with the boxes, with the ductwork, with the last project, the last little upgrade we had.
We're really not trying to upgrade anything. We're trying to make-
Trying to fit everybody in.
We're trying to make do with what we have. And the bottom line is, and what I said the last time, is everybody is just going to have to use what we have until these projects are done and then we can find out where everybody's going to be dispersed to afterwards. So what we need to get done is make accommodations for people right now.
And we did do that.
Exactly, we did, but we're also going to have to use what we have without expending a lot of money.
We're not expending a lot of money.
Well, $23,000 to me is a lot of money that I saw come across my plate.
Well, I think to Christian's point, what we should see is an actual detailed plan, right? And then we can react to the funding once we have a plan. Because to just pick a number and-
I'm not writing a check for $23,000 not knowing where it's going to get spent.
You know, unfortunately, what's happened is we got stuck in this issue with the DPW because everything goes from NBC, NBC, our committee. Gary's worked it out and then goes to DPW director. And it kind of got lost at the shop. We, I unfortunately assumed that it was presented to David. It wasn't, okay?
I'm sorry, are you talking about this week or are you talking about Marlowe before he left?
Marlowe before he left.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, yeah, I was on the assumption that there was, it had been dispersed. Now I'm finding out, I was trying to get together with David last week, sit down and go through all this stuff. We weren't, we were not able to do that. Yes, we need to get everything on paper to show you exactly what everything is. But what was asked of me was, what is the highest, the number that we're looking at? It's 22. Can it be lower? Yes. But, I mean, it's realistically, we can't shove everybody into this entire building without some type of slight modifications. We just don't have that many places to put everybody.
So assuming that, you know, David Phil has his conversation, everything's copacetic with Mr. Okafor, they work it out. And again, just making sure that whatever Gary's not doing, there's coverage if it's important to. And he's off and running, I mean, it seems to me fairly quickly a meeting could be pulled together with the appropriate parties to put together a plan, right? And then, so what I'm asking is, would it be too late for us to have that at our next meeting and?
No, because those figures are around.
Okay, because I don't, nobody's trying to delay, but again, we don't want to be just, like Joyce says, just throwing money at something we don't even know we're throwing it at.
So Phil, what is the timeframe that we want to start this move? What's the date?
Well, library project, I want to say that they want to start a date in May 1, May 1st. Senior Center wise, oh, so senior center is March 1st.
Right, so we want people out of there before March 1st.
Correct.
Before?
Well, so.
No, 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 we're breaking ground on the new building, March 1st. April 1st was the date we were told we needed to be out.
Okay.
Right, and the senior center construction project had always anticipated that was going to be occupied, that building was going to be occupied while we start.
Okay.
So I made a motion. I don't know if there was a second.
Second.
Oh, no. Listen to it on the table. Any other discussion on this? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate this. We can move forward. So we'll stay tuned for your next meeting.
So we're actually hiring Larry or we're using him?
He's already hired.
He's already hired. Yeah, we're using the services.
He's already, he is. And then David's going to meet with-
We don't have to hire another person. That's, that was-
What you thought?
No, that's what you guys, that's what you guys-
You weren't at the last few meetings. That's true.
I watched it. I'm like, why are they hiring another person when we already have two?
Because we wanted you to get right up and come over and talk to us.
Oh, I got a lot to say to you. Don't worry about that.
I usually do. Anything else, David?
I think we're good, Joyce. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. See you tomorrow, Phil?
Yeah, see you Friday.
Hopefully, Mike tomorrow night. Okay, happy move. I guess not.
Well, we're having a meeting on Friday, so we haven't really met since before our last meeting.
Library, I can, quick update, library building.
I was going to say, do we have any updates on with the church with the senior center? Any updates there?
Yeah, so we have to observe their internal process. Apparently, the church parish finance committee is meeting on Monday. We do have a draft proposal in hand.
It's actually the parish council, I think, but she's going to the finance committee.
Thank you for that clarification. We do have a draft proposal on hand. I haven't had a chance to read it. I just received it. I have sent it over to the assessors to find out what tax impact may apply. Haven't digested, I've received information, but I haven't digested it yet. So we'll have that, that proposal in further ado as soon as possible. But it looks like it's beginning to come together.
And then the library building committee, we met last night, Tuesday night, and that's moving along. While we were looking, so they're actually, next stop is next Tuesday going to planning board. If you recall, at the planning board meeting last, after they, you know, got through their vote on the site plan, there were some questions and they asked the library building folks to come back in. Specifically, they wanted to see the vegetation thing. So that's all completed, I believe. They sent everything off to either Bill or Jim today. So that's kind of the next big thing, but, you know, not, not really anticipating any, too much excitement around that. Looks pretty perfunctory, but famous last words.
Other question. You mentioned they're going to the church. Some people, some people are coming here. Who's going to the church? Who's going to here?
Well, we have-
It hasn't been decided.
Council on Aging and the Veteran Services are going to go to the church. Historic Commission, Park and Rec, Planning Board are going to come here.
And Heather Mudiya?
Fire Station Committee meeting will be tomorrow night. We haven't anything new. Since then, I did get a new agenda. We've been going before the planning board with some preliminary meeting in February. So that will get started then. That's all I have from them right now. All our plans are pretty well set. We've done some changes in the, inside the electrical area, things like that. So it's all coming together.
I think we received a letter from somebody interested in some land there.
Yeah, and remember, we already voted- That's the same person that was interested before.
That's, you got one person on one side and then the others on the other side.
Correct, correct. And we had voted that at this time that we are not interested in selling any part of the property.
Yep.
Let's do Linta. We want to talk about treasurer and tax collector legislative changes. Those are coming up. Those took effect with Governor Baker passing that this week. So you are the first on the agenda. Do not have to run for reelection this year?
That's very nice. Just in time.
You don't have to stand out if we're here.
Just in time. I did it twice.
So, very much looking forward. I think we had discussion before that we just set up a contract. Is that not correct, David?
Right, so the discussion has always been that you have two excellent people who are doing an excellent job in terms of tax collection, in terms of managing the treasury. And so we had asked Town Meeting to support special acts of legislation. They did. They went through the House of Representatives and the Senate and signed by the governor. So now it takes effect. We certainly want to keep with a winning team that we currently have. The legislation provides for a contract if you want to enter into a contract. But if, we should talk about the process of making a smooth transition from your elected term which expires on April 9th and the appointed term which would begin that midnight. So do you want to have some sort of negotiation about a contract? What is the process that you want to follow?
Well, we should certainly have set up a contract. So you could certainly look at other towns and think, see what we need to have for a contract. Molly, you're working with the town offices and things. Did you have any input on to?
Yeah, I mean, I guess one question would be, do we want it to be a contract? Do we want it to be a job description? Right now, I mean.
I think we need both, actually, don't we? Or I think we need a job description.
Well, we need a job description for sure.
For sure.
Well, with the timing of, I know this is your, that you're going to be putting more money into town government, general government. And one of the areas that's being discussed, or a couple of them, will impact the Treasury Department. What we're going to do with HR, whether we're going to have something more- What we're going to do with HR, whether we're going to have something more as far as in finance. Any of these plugged in makes a shift in the responsibilities that is handled out of my office. Whether that also makes a specific change in the Treasurer's specific job description or not, I don't know. So I'm, I'm feeling somewhat flexible about this, if we have to have something in place, I think we can put something together, even if it's somewhat short term. While we work the rest of these out. I, I want to make sure that this, it fits in with where the town wants to go in its next step. And that it's not something that we put, I don't want this job description to be a fixed point that you have to work around. Because I know that we're, we're sort of a, we're a work in progress right now as to how we're going to handle some other things at Town Hall. So I've talked with David about this and how these various things are going to come together, hopefully come together at the same time, because we have to have our budget in place. But I want to see, I want to make sure that what is described for me fits in with how we're handling these others and, you know, what we're doing with the Assistant Treasurer, whether she's going to be in HR. There's a lot, I think, I feel it's quite up in the air right now, so I'm okay being somewhat flexible, if you're okay.
Good, sounds good. We like flexible.
Our, our, who, the treasurer just, it was flat before, the structure of the town, you know, is voters, treasurer, tax collector, you know?
Right.
Us, Town Administrator, so are we, is the Treasurer and Tax Collector under us, direct report to us? Or under the Town Administrator? Okay.
No, I mean, you've got to make that decision.
That's a decision I'm saying, that we, we have to make.
At the home, they would automatically default to us until we did something to account for it.
And do we have any opinions one way or the other on that?
Not right now.
Not right now? Do you have time to make that decision? Okay.
So maybe what we could do is a, a letter of intent, something along those lines, so that-
Some understanding, letter of understanding?
So that, that way, you have something in writing that you'll continue on and be paid the same as you are, and the same duties, until such time that we can come up with a contract after the range and compensation study's done and the HR issue and all that kind of stuff.
And April 10 is an awkward start anyways, maybe it's something we, that you want to have something, we want to have something that gets to July 1 and then have July 1, and you're going to have that issue in two years when the collector comes up. It's, you know, that's just some thoughts there. And I think that the difference between April 9 and July 1 will be large, because we will have resolved what you're going to be funding in town government and on how we'll be, we'll be done with the May Town Meeting. And you'll know what the budget is and where it is and where the money is, and then we make the job description fit in, what the decision was.
Well, that's what I do, because then that protects everybody, it's clear, you know what your compensation is.
Yep, sort of status quo for the rest of the fiscal year.
Okay. Do you know any lawyers?
She is one herself.
I'm probably not advocating for myself as much as I could, but I don't think you're the town here. So I, I think that that's probably the best way. I think if this wasn't also the year where we're trying to figure out something different in, with town government. I mean, town government, I don't want people thinking we're talking about something huge, but you had said that we're putting the extra money into Town Hall Government this year. And it will involve looking closely at the, particularly the HR and Finance corner of Town Hall. And so that's, I'm not talking about shifts all across the board, but these specific shifts will impact Treasurer Department and obviously the Treasurer position. So, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Good. All right. Thank you.
Perfect. All right, we'll go back to direct local technical assistance grant applications.
Due on Friday. The town is submitting four applications for technical assistance to help out with projects that you could have a hard time dealing with on our own. The Planning Board is submitting an application for the flood insurance maps and making sure that the proposed revisions are accurate or at least are, come up with a methodology for testing the accuracy of those. So that's handled through the Planning Board, through the Select Board, there are three applications. You'll remember the Planning Board came to the Select Board and talked about the need to do something about affordable housing.
Yeah, we've also had, talked about this a few meetings, actually.
Yeah, this is a high priority for the D L T A program. So I've put together an application to have us review our affordable housing currently and put together a strategy, making sure that we have a good mix of all types of housing, affordable housing. Include, particularly keeping on, above the 10% mark, so that you're not subject to Chapter 40 B subdivision. It's a type of subdivision that doesn't have to pay attention to local zoning. So those are, just follow, it's not deer field and the trouble that they're going into right now. So that's number one. Number two is this is to implement a community compact recommendation for financial management, which is to develop a comprehensive financial policy manual. We have a million policies that affect our finances, but they're spread out of a number of documents. Put together one cohesive manual that would be accessible by all decision makers. And three, to, then the third one is a regional grant application with Chesterfield as lead community. We would be looking at the impact of OSHA requirements, particularly having to do with policy development and policy implementation that is required next month. So those are the three applications through the Select Board.
February 1, did you do that webinar or not?
Yep.
So they pretty much explained, they are going to come around to every town. The ones that request it. Each department separately, so DPW, Police, Fire, whatever departments want them to come in and assess their facilities and operations, they will. OSHA still got the jurisdiction over on incident, on the private sector. Where the state's going to take over the inspections of incidents in the public sector. So, and you, they just sent me another thing with all the contacts, because they went through the program so quickly. It was a two-hour program, though, it was really informative of who's, who's doing what. We, we have had already-
Or who do you, do you report, like, when an incident happens, who you have to report to?
You went through all of that. They sent the whole program again, so if you want to watch it and see who you need to contact. We have, unfortunately, already been in contact and had an inspection, initial inspection done of an incident in the wastewater, so we've got our feet wet already, and they will be back, so.
Yeah, we've invited them to look at DPW, so, but this would be, this would be a comprehensive policy management, policy implementation.
Separate, separate water, separate wastewater, because they both have individual needs amongst each other.
Okay. All right.
I just want to go on record saying that my downsizing retirement plan, I've got my eye on David's chicken coop.
To live in?
Looking pretty palatial, I can tell.
So I can't submit the grant applications unless you all vote to authorize them.
And this is all through Pioneer Valley Planning?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the D L T A grant applications.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, thank you. All right, old business, Director of Department of Public Works.
We have a contract, we have Mr. Christopher Okafor, who's been on the job for three days. And I'm asking that you ratify the employment agreement.
Is that a vote or did we just sign one?
Be cleanest if you had a vote, vote to ratify.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we ratify the contract with Chris Okafor, for DPW Director.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Upstand. On that note, are we going to release the vote at least on hiring a DPW Director? You guys had an executive session. We haven't done executive session releases in quite some time either, so.
We have a practice of doing it, what, quarterly or twice a year?
Twice a year. I think we're a little delayed on this, so we can, we can review.
Sure.
So I did talk to him today, Mr. Okafor, and so far, so good. He's getting everything, trying to, getting used to things, and we're going to have a meeting next week and kind of go over his priorities of what he's learned, so.
Yes.
Department heads gave him a nice warm welcome, so I took it, it was good.
Nice, good.
So along those lines, I'm going to be with him on Tuesday morning next, and we're going to see what we can do about putting the budget as well as reviewing projects that are outstanding. If you want to coordinate with him.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll talk.
Then what's the status on Moody Bridge Road?
That's on, that's seven point, that's 7.4, we're coming up to it, hang on. RFP Compensation Classification Plan.
So I've put together the RFP for the Compensation Classification Plan. I've just asked that you review the scope of work, if you approve it, I'd be happy to send this out tomorrow, and we'll fast track this project.
Anybody have a problem with that, did they have a chance to read it?
I did, I mean, it looked like it covered everything but the kitchen sink.
The only thing, what was the deadline for this?
2:00 PM on, there was no date there.
Yeah, there's no date, so I would sit down with a calendar and work that out, but-
So if we voted tonight, then you would-
Put the date in.
Right, so I want the contractor to start no later than 14 days after the award.
I just meant the final results coming in, so that we can work on it and craft, craft the budget for future years, based on what?
So called 30 days to do it, or 45 days to do it, something like that.
So we're talking probably March, January?
Okay, is there a vote?
Make a motion to approve the RFP Compensation Classification Plan and send it out tomorrow morning.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. North Hadley Village Hall Realtor bid, and we did have one, correct?
Yes, we have one response to the RFP motion. It was a full and complete RFP proposal. There were a couple of form things that they're going to correct, I spoke to a person today. But it was Stiles and Dunn, they're part of the Jones Group of Realtors. It's actually Karen and Luke, and they're a family team. Parents, child. I talked to Karen today to just check on a couple of form things with her. Unfortunately, she does not have municipal sales experience, which under the terms of the RFP means it's not affiliated to the town. That being said, I've done some research, and there's not a whole lot of Realtors out there that have municipal sales experience that I've found out there. She does have experience doing historic reservations, historic restrictions, and things like that, which is the other part of what we asked her. Again, it's not municipal, it's on the private side. That being said, the commission they're requesting is on par with the 6%, which is what y'all were expecting from the last people who did have the experience.
Are they asking for anything upfront?
They're not.
Okay.
It's, it's stated in there, and I also told her that we would be negotiating the contract terms, but that was part of it. And that was written into the RFP when we sent it out, that compensation is due at the end of the, the completion of the sale.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Are we making a motion to?
Accept the-
I'm just not quick, just accept it, go in?
To review it?
You have to accept the bid.
Accept the bid. Motion to accept the bid?
But we haven't seen anything, have we? Or we have to accept the bid to see it?
No.
Bid for Realtor services.
This is just a-
I'm just confused because I don't see it.
It's their services, that's all, there's no money. Not funny, no money, we just want to sell the builders. Services.
Is it a percentage?
It's 6% of it, I'm sorry, I did not leave this all on there.
Yeah, I see.
Typically, it was just a bid tabulation sheet is what I put on.
Correct.
But I have everything here, and, look to the right page, I believe it's $299,000 is what she was suggesting it be listed at, but I'm going to hate it if I've said that completely.
Got that money spitting out, Molly?
Yeah, thinking about it.
She'll go home and sleep on that tonight.
It's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money, could start her own program. I can make a motion to accept the bid from Stiles and Dunn.
Yeah, second.
Any further discussion? No. All those in favor? Aye.
Upstand.
Aye.
And last but not least, we have Moody Bridge Road, David.
Okay, so I met-
Oh, that's not last, but almost.
So I met with Mr. Okafor, obviously, he doesn't have a detailed proposal for us. But the concept would be that he's looking for a green light from the Select Board to move forward on the engineering, the permitting, and then the construction of the new culverts on Moody Bridge Road, which had failed.
I thought we'd already voted on that.
We already voted on that to give David the authority to get it done, and the road's still closed.
Yeah.
It was, um-
It's okay, I don't care if the road's still, the neighbors down there are very happy that it's still closed, let me tell you.
My wife almost got stuff.
Not all of them, they're still complaining to you.
Well, because people drive around it.
Yeah.
The, I thought the plan was to try to get it done under an emergency-
Repair.
Repair. In order to avoid some of the additional costs associated with the full engineering. So I just want to make sure that, I guess we may need to talk with him and make sure that we're on the same page there.
Yeah, the same company that did Schmurrer Road and did the drainpipe up there on 47, we're pretty good working together with them. We did the work ourselves, and it went right along quick. They came out a couple times, and a couple issues we had, even Jan Stone came out, took a look at it, and said, just do whatever you got to do to get this thing open back up.
I know that if we do it the emergency way, it can be 50 to 80, and if we do it the other way, it can be 250 in quite some time.
Yeah.
All right, well, let's do it your first way. Sounds like a plan.
Seems like it was a slam dunk to be a-
Yeah. So do you need to have us, we, I guess we gave you direction before, so let's just get it moving.
Okay.
All right?
All right.
All right, get it moving.
Yeah.
Get it done.
Get it done.
I mean, they patched it, and the road is still accessible, I don't know why it's still blocked.
I'm not sure either, but license renewals, are we all set on them?
There are five outstanding, but the $100 late fee worked really well, thank you very much. All the people I typically chase, I did not chase, they were all magically here when I walked in on January 2nd.
Make it 200 next year.
I haven't had a response for the five that are outstanding. I did hear that one of them, from the, from one of the businesses, I heard they are actually going out of business. I won't say their name, because that's not fair to them right now. And then I've heard rumors about the others, but they are not responding to me. So I will call them again and leave another message. And then they'll come to the point where if they don't have their food permits, the Board of Health is going to have to do a cease and desist, and Tim's going to have to get involved. I'm sorry?
Remember one of our meetings?
We, David, I was waiting for this meeting for y'all to tell me if that's where you want to go.
We just resolved a sewer issue, we're going to go out, remember the meeting?
Yeah, they paid.
It's three car dealers and a common vic is, is what is outstanding right now. That's it. It's, it's, all, the liquor licenses are way done, those are the very big ones. And there's a couple of others that are quite large, just because of the number of licenses they hold. Like Global Spectrum holds a lot of licenses, so they're a large one, but these are all relatively small. As I understand, some of the car dealers just aren't selling cars anymore, I think they're sort of retired out, they're just- I think they're sort of retired out and they're just not telling me, so. But if y'all want them brought in, I can send out letters and schedule them for upcoming meetings.
I think, well, if they even come now, they'll still have the $100?
Everybody's $100 late fee now. Technically, all of their licenses are expired now, so they need to renew them. Like they don't, they're not just renewing, they would technically need to apply.
So do we need to send them a letter and say that you do not have a license now? Because I think, so that's probably what we should do?
Mm-hmm.
Send them a letter?
Okay.
Would you mind?
You don't have a license?
No, I would love to do that, thank you. I will do that.
Send them a letter and in that same letter say you have an appointment with the select board.
Well, if you intend to renew, it's a full application then.
Can we, at least for the car dealers that maybe still have to visit the location of cars, make sure they understand that they should not be operating in business in the meantime until they have a license?
I will double check with Tim on all of them and make sure that they're not operating. If they, if they're not in operation, it's not just us, they also have to have a surety bond. So there's, the Class 2 auto dealers don't typically sell without. But I will circle back around with Tim and ask him to go out and make sure nobody is selling cars.
So it looks like you have nine licenses that need to be approved.
Nice.
Motion to a group?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have anything in your report, David, that you need to tell us about or did we cover it already?
We covered a lot of it, just to let people know that things are very busy right now. Just to give an update on the progress on the three buildings. March 1, we're looking at the senior center groundbreaking. May 1 is the demolition of the Hooker School, so therefore April 1 is a good time for the big move. June 1 is the library groundbreaking and July 1 is the fire substation groundbreaking. So that's where we are with those. Taken care of the cemeteries in Hockenham, North Hadley Village. And in our town meeting, we just took care of the OSHA update, took care of. We finally got back from the state, the Housing Choice Small Town Capital Improvements Grant. They finally signed the contract, so we're now moving that project forward. That's the $95,000 repair to the water lines over on Campus Plaza Road and.
One question about that, did we ever work out any of the details as far as it remaining as?
Town property or?
No, I mean as far as the affordable housing, you know, before we actually commit that money to the project. Because that was one of the points that we wanted to talk about in exchange for giving them a grant.
Well, giving them the opportunity to read up is part of the grant requirement and so we'll be having that conversation.
Okay.
Yeah. We hired the DPW director, talked about Linda and Susan. The audit is almost done. We have a punch list of items that need to be addressed. But the draft audit is expected to be in advance of our scheduled springtime borrowing. Community Compact IT Grant, we just started that for the conversion of the Batar Systems downstairs. And Susan's office has $19,350 for that project. And Susan's office is going to be extremely busy for the remainder of the fall and spring, winter and spring as they make that conversion work. Everything else we've taken care of.
David, do you know, that was the other question I was going to ask you on that OSHA thing. They had mentioned our insurance companies, so MMIA, are they working with that new OSHA board?
Yes.
Did you know?
So that's, that's one of the things that prompted me to go for the DLTA grant. It's because we, Safety Committee did me with Maya and they, they put on our place of super work that everybody felt like they just couldn't deal with. There was so much in the way of developing policy, knowing what kind of policies to develop, implementing the policies, doing the self-assessment. It just seemed like an amount of work, given everything else that we're doing, would, that would be something that we should farm out.
The basic safety things are one thing, but the industrial type settings like the water department and the wastewater department are more an industrial setting rather than a municipal setting. So if MMIA is working with the, with the state OSHA now, I'm sure that they're going to come up with some type of plans for some of these facilities, water facilities, wastewater facilities throughout the state probably. Can you ask MMIA?
So we'll be seeing them next weekend and we can certainly ask them. The Safety Committee is scheduled next to meet on March 20th, so we can keep that conversation going.
There was some questions, but I just couldn't take fast enough. I had for them, but they went off the air pretty quick after the webinar.
Okay, and, and we have announcements, anybody have anything for this evening?
I have one from Jennifer, 2019 reservoir permits are available, see Jennifer.
See Jennifer, super.
I've got announcements from the town clerk. So the town clerk's request, she would like us to remind everybody that town elections are coming up on April 9. The nomination papers are available in her office until February 14. Valentine's Day, perfect time to take out papers. And the last day to register to vote for the town election is March 20. So in addition, well, actually just sticking on the town election, there are actually many seats that are up for either open or for reelection. Two select board seats, one planning board seat, one school committee seat and a host of others I can't even recall.
No, I'm not going to wait till February 14, get the papers out because Melissa will hit me in the head with them.
So if you want that information, you can either contact the town clerk directly or you can go on the town website. And I believe that Hadley Media will also be putting those up if they haven't done so already. So the other bit of good news from the town clerk's office is that the census is coming soon to your house. So please make sure you complete the census and return it as soon as possible.
Okay. I have a thank you to the Hadley Garden Center, Tom and Janine Giles, for the wreaths that we have on our town hall over the holidays. Thank them very much, they donate to us every year and we do appreciate it, thank you. We also have had unfortunately a sad past month with many passings. Ray Nelson Sealy, Larry Smith, Evan Louise Mullin, Antonia Gudgen. Condolences to all of their families. We have, starting with the eldest, would be Lindell Day Nuttlemann at 100 years old. Her son James and of course her grandson JJ, who took really good care of grandma. Florence Davison, she worked for our school department for many years, the secretary to the superintendent. She passed. Denise Drausdel, her daughter Patricia Alex lives here in town. John Hanesky, his wife Anna is still with us and so condolences to all of them. And the youngest would be Jamie McCauley Tootren. Our condolences to Matt and Elaine on their passing, her passing. Sad for all of us from the select board. And that's it for me, anything, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good evening, good night.